We'll get started in just a moment.
They're gonna get nothing here. Alright, so I'm gonna move this. Yeah, the chat will be right here. So just keep an eye on that. Questions will come to you. It's assigned to you right there. Good, how you doing? Alright, so we'll go ahead and get started. So we're meeting today because we as a board made a decision to kind of reset the clock on the series of meetings needed for the increase. We actually met about this in July and that was the first meeting. The second meeting never occurred because we decided to reset the series. So first I want to talk about something that's said and done. I think there is some confusion because the amount of the increase and the special assessment amount are the same. It's eighty-five dollars. So first of all, the eighty-five dollar special assessment is final. It was finalized the day we had that meeting. I believe it was July the sixteenth. The HOA covenant states that as long as the special assessment is less than the yearly dues, then it does not require a vote from HOA members, and obviously it was. Once we had that meeting with that thirty day notice, the special assessment became final. It was due on September first, late after the last day in September. Everyone should have been invoiced for it via PayPal. Just like anytime, if you experience any kind or our experience in any kind of financial hardship, let us know. I think Melvin obviously had that precedent in the past and will continue it. You know, we'll work with you. I think, you know, it still was kind of last minute, as in it was a foreseen, an unforeseen expense. So that, the special assessment is done. So I just want to make sure no one's confused that the meeting is for that. This meeting is solely for our proposal to increase HOA dues from one hundred and sixty-five dollars per year to two hundred and fifty dollars per year, due on the first of every calendar year. That is our proposal. That cannot be done just because we want it to be done. It's a process we have to go through. We have to meet today and we have to have a good amount of attendance. We have to meet what's called a quorum for a vote to even take place. If that minimum amount of members is not present, then we hold a second meeting. If you looked at my email, you'll see that the second meeting is already scheduled. That meeting doesn't have to have as many people present, but still has to have, I want to say forty percent of members present to constitute a quorum for us to vote. If after both of those meetings, we don't have a quorum present to vote, then the board, which consists of myself, Amanda and Tasha, take whatever action we see fit. And I can already tell you that we're gonna vote to improve the increase. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. If the increase is voted against, we can increase dues ten percent without approval from the members of the HOA. So on that email, I let everyone know that if the increase failed, then the next meeting that occurs in October would be the official notification of that ten percent increase. So just kind of some legalese, if you will, to kind of get through on why we're here today. So last time I sent out some spreadsheets. I didn't do that. I'm sorry.
If you vote today, do you have to come to the meeting the next time?
Yeah, based on the covenant, you must be present either at the meeting or by proxy, which means that you're joined into the virtual meeting to vote at that time. So you do have to be present to vote, whether you're here or you're on your phone via YouTube, but you do have to be present one way or another to vote. Alright.
Is there any other way that you all can get more information about email or YouTube or whatever? There's older people that don't use that type of communication. So is there any other way that you can get the information out?
Right. So I can tell you in twenty twenty-two, our primary method of communication is going to be email. One thing that we've been working on that we frankly didn't have the money for that we do now is, a lot of you guys have been here for a while. You remember the website we had, which made communicating with everybody a little bit easier, made paying dues a little bit easier. I talked to Melvin and Melvin cut that in an attempt to try to keep cutting the budget to save some money. So that's gonna be our primary method of communication. We will have a handful of members that we know, you know, like you said, elderly people who don't particularly use email and will try to communicate in a more traditional manner. But our primary way to communicate is gonna be through email. Won't necessarily be through Facebook. Anything we put on Facebook that's official has likely already been emailed out. But our primary, our primary method of communication will be by email.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
But proxy can mean paper too, right?
Not from my interpretation.
It can. Proxy means anything other than being physically present.
Okay. So we can see if that's the case, then we'll vote, you know, we'll do that on the next meeting. Because I'm pretty sure we're not gonna meet the minimum this meeting. I think today we need sixty percent of members, which is like a hundred and thirty people. And my gut is we'd be lucky to hit forty. And I bet we don't hit that the second meeting as well. So we'll take a look at that. I can tell y'all though, I've been clear. I said this in the last meeting. If I'm elected as president and this increase does not go through, I'm gonna tell you what twenty twenty-three is gonna look like. The ten percent increase is gonna go through. Where the board is gonna sit here again next summer and be short on money and we're gonna be looking at another special assessment to bridge that gap. One thing I refuse to do as president that we've done in the past is operate with nowhere near enough funds. And that'll kind of get into, we used the minutes from the last meeting. First thing I want to start off is there's this myth going around that this is some problem that started when this board took over in February. That is categorically and absolutely false. If you look towards the middle of that page, you will see the budget shorts, shortfalls that we had, and this is just the last three years. Those three years have an average amount of almost eight thousand dollars that we were short. That means every, those of us that have been here for a while, remember Melvin, we know this time of year, Melvin's begging everybody to pay their next year dues early because what we would have to do is pull from next year's money to finish getting through this year and pay the bills. If you have read the covenant, that is a huge no-no. Not only are we not supposed to do that, the covenant states that we are to maintain a reserve that is sufficient to cover unexpected expenses, few months' worth of bills, things like that. I can tell you from researching that we had a reserve before the pool in his house was built. We had overages related to some trees under where the pool is right now. The reserve account was completely wiped out. From what I see, we have not had a reserve since that pool was, not even just built, since the construction began in twenty eighteen. And that's a huge problem. I think everyone remembers earlier this year, we had a big time leak. Leak was bad. Flooded a lot of this, flooded the kitchen so bad that, it looks exactly the same really, but all the cabinets had to be replaced. Long story short, it was a ten thousand dollar repair. We had a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. We went over about three hundred dollars in construction. So roughly three K came out of our budget at the very beginning of the year to pay for that fix. That was supposed to come out of a reserve. Again, our reserve has been non-existent since the pool was built. Might could just do some simple math, right? We have two hundred and seventeen homes in Lexington Hills. We will never collect at a hundred percent right then. Sometimes some people pass away. Sometimes unfortunately we have to take legal action. We'll eventually recoup that money, but it may be in the next year. Sometimes we had one estate settled. It was two years later. But even if you took two seventeen times one sixty-five, you get roughly about thirty-two thousand dollars. Our mortgage is nineteen hundred twenty-five dollars a month. When you take that, insurance, power, water, just our basic bills, the minute we went under construction, we're at, right at thirty-two thousand dollars in just basic bills with a max income from HOA fees of thirty-two thousand dollars. It is my opinion that the minute we signed for that loan, we were in trouble. Now, I understand the mindset we had back then. I happen to stay on Magazine Lane. Some of you guys do as well. If you do, you know, they build Magazine Lane fast. They build Magazine Lightning fast. And Melvin's, the info he got from Greyhawk was that Legion and Parapet, the street that's gonna be paved behind Magazine Lane, has a couple houses on it. The information we got from Greyhawk was that those were gonna be built just as fast as Magazine Lane. I want to say Greyhawk planned to be out of here by twenty twenty-one. So I think Melvin's vision was to try to keep dues down and depend on those new home bills and HOA fees to bridge this gap as we got further into this mortgage. Well, a pandemic happened. Everybody can see how construction on Legion just, just froze, just froze in place. Some, I know some people from the neighborhood do woodwork and stuff. Wood prices doubled, almost tripled, everything went up. So obviously that impacted Greyhawk. Now we're sitting almost twenty twenty-three and they're not even finished with Legion. So I know that was Melvin's mindset was that if they build at the pace that they said, I think we'd have been short, but we'd have cut it close. We'd have cut it really close. Average street has about thirty homes. You know, you add another forty-five, fifty homes to the equation, then the numbers look a little bit different. I can tell you from conversations with Melvin, Melvin knew these fees had to go up. He knew they did. We could not continue to operate as we have. I'll be transparent. The special assessment was approved. The day I sent those invoices, we had less than three hundred dollars in Lexington Hills money. Less than three hundred dollars. Our mortgage was past due. I had to take my time and cancel every single bill that we had on auto draft because we didn't have the money for them. That's where we were at with the special assessment. And we talked about that in the last meeting, that we were broke. Not broke where we can do some moving and shaking and get some things figured out. We were broke where we were about to go under and default on this mortgage. We get thirty days. When we hit that thirtieth day, our mortgage moves into default status with Truist and we would be in serious trouble. So I'm gonna be honest. Amanda and Tasha wanted to do the increase sooner than I did. I knew we needed it. I wanted to put it off till next year. If you've been paying attention, we've tried raffles. Previously, we had stopped renting the pool for money. We tried to rent the pool to get some additional funds. We tried refinancing the mortgage. We use local lenders like Kinetic. We tried Truist. We tried some commercial lenders that Michelle Williams, the Realtor, gave us. The only options we had were to refi from a ten-year fixed mortgage at about, I think, five percent into a fifteen-year adjustable rate mortgage, which would lock our rate in for five years. And then after five years, we'd be at the Marcus Mercy, our rate could go up to eight, nine, ten percent. Lots of us are old enough to remember what happened in the two thousands when people used to get adjustable rate mortgages and your rate goes up two percent. Your payment goes up six hundred dollars and you can't afford it. Obviously, that wasn't something we would accept. And I'm gonna be honest, I don't think we would have got approved, no way. Because the minute they took a look, you know, they won't even get your blood type to get approved for a home loan. All of us have been through it. The minute they took a look at our books and saw that we keep running out of money every year and that we don't take enough money in to pay the mortgage, I don't think we would have gotten approved for a refi anyway. But it doesn't matter because none of the options were feasible. If you pay attention to real estate, you know, prices are skyrocketing and so are rates. And so we tried, refinancing was kind of one of the big things we wanted to try. If we can drop that payment to maybe thirteen, thirteen fifty from nineteen twenty-five, maybe we could have struggled and made it. So we tried lots of things in an attempt to raise monies before we came to the conclusion that we just weren't taking in enough money. You can go ahead, Mr. Burks.
Just a question. When you say the pool area here.
Yeah. Yeah, all of this, the pool and this clubhouse, the mortgage is, I want to say nineteen twenty-five seventy-seven. I know the nineteen twenty-five is right. It's some change on there, but roughly two thousand dollars a month is our mortgage. So you do some rough math. That's roughly twenty-four thousand dollars a year just to pay the mortgage. So there's no way we can operate. Twenty-four thousand on a mortgage, another four thousand insurance, that's got you at twenty-eight thousand. By the time you pay power, water, we're upside down. We're just upside down. That's where we've been every year. We cannot continue to operate like that. I made this comment last meeting. I'm fine with stressing over my home budget. If something comes up unexpected, that is what I am, that's just what I'm tasked with. I am not okay with stressing over this HOA budget. This is a volunteer job that it costs me money to be HOA president. Like it costs me money, my time is money. It costs me and any other member of the Lexington Hills Board money to be the HOA president. I can tell you that our biggest stress, and we saw it as soon as we took over, has been financial, money. We can see in March, we weren't gonna have money to get through the summer. Another big expense that popped up was pool security. Melvin had a special meeting last year talking about the need for a pool attendant or pool security. I'm sure most of you remember that. Well, I think we've known for years that we've needed something down at the pool to keep our, our area secure. And, but we didn't really do anything to create monies in the budget to pay for that. We tried to go without pool security. Our last straw, all three of us had to come down here. Amanda's husband had to come down here because a resident said some boys jumped the fence and they thought the kids had guns in their backpacks. That was, that was, that was the last straw. Some of you, I'm sure, noticed ever since then, you came by and you saw on Saturdays and Sundays, you saw Columbus Police Officer vehicle at this pool every single Saturday and Sunday. We start, we hired off-duty officers like you see in Piglet Wood, for example, to do security. Once that happened, we didn't come down here not one time for an incident. To try to save money, we did it for about six weeks and we said, let's stop for one weekend and see what happened. The very first weekend, they cut a hole right by Miss Rogers' property. They cut a hole through the gate. Cost us four hundred dollars to get it fixed. The first weekend, we went without security. So I think we have to be realistic. Needing security is not some new thing. We know we've needed for a while. I love our neighborhood. We have to be realistic where we're located. I love our area, but we're close to some not-so-desirable parts of town and unfortunately usually it's these young kids. They come, they wanna, you know, jump the fence. They're the same kids pulling on these doors, getting guns. Like I, I feel like you gotta assume these young kids are armed and dangerous. So one thing, it is our responsibility to keep common areas safe and secure for every single resident of Lexington Hills. So pool security was the, we weren't gonna have enough money anyway. That really blew the top off the budget. And that's when we concluded that we had to go ahead and do the special assessment to just get through this year. If you notice, the special assessment is the exact same amount of the proposed increase. We sat down for a long time to try to come up with a number that we felt was good. We landed at eighty-five dollars. I can tell you, my opinion is that these dues, I've been here since seventeen. When I look, the dues have been the same for seven, I think, almost eight years. My opinion is that these dues should have went up with some small increases before now. So we come in, Jacques comes in, Tasha, Amanda, we come in and now we're the bad guy. Because we refuse to continue to operate out of compliance with the covenant, where we cannot have a reserve fund that's necessary for the neighborhood. We sat, we put our foot down and said, we will not operate like that any longer. So now we're the bad guys in a lot of HOA members' eyes because we are the ones with the guts enough to say these fees gotta go up. And that's where we're at today. Again, I'll be transparent, assuming I'm re-elected and maybe I won't be. If these fees do not go up, we will raise them ten percent, which ten percent, that's sixteen fifty, that's one eighty, one fifty, doing some quick math. The dues will go up to one eighty, one fifty and we're gonna be, we're gonna have a meeting. I'll be looking at y'all faces next summer telling you about a special assess. Probably won't be eighty-five, might be a little bit less, but that's where we're gonna be at, is another special assessment to bridge this gap because we're just not taking in enough money. Everybody in here, you can go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to say, I think people in the neighborhood too need to understand, right? These fees have been low when Miss Render was on the board.
Right.
Ms. Codge, me, these fees have been the same. I think I've been here since twenty thirteen.
Right.
And the fees have been the same. And you don't, you don't really get people to participate until we start talking money.
Agreed.
And then everybody wanna come out the woodwork and say, well, I don't agree with this. Personally, I think the fees need to be more.
Agreed.
Even the proposed and new amount.
I agree. I agree. I would like to have some security. Nobody likes these young kids pulling on these doors. Now, that's probably five, six hundred dollars a year. I kind of shrug my shoulders. The average HOA pays more than we do per month, per month.
I think we need to be around the two seventy-five a year mark.
I, I agree. I think the, the increase was lower than we thought. It was like the bare minimum we felt we needed. And I tell you, Tasha, I argue with Tasha till my voice was gone. Tasha said it should have been more. And she, she's right. What we're trying to balance what the HOA needs with keeping everybody's individual situation in mind. We know everybody's not made out of money. But we do think the average middle-class Lexington Hills family probably is fine paying another, because eighty-five dollars a year is seven dollars a month. Seven dollars and eight cents. So do I think, now, we are gonna have some families experiencing hardship, no doubt about it. But for ninety percent of what's seven dollars a month, you can shrug your shoulders at that. I'm sure I wasted seven dollars yesterday. But I agree with you. The fees probably should be higher than what they are. And I think that they were left too low for way, just way entirely too long. So, and I appreciate your.
I just wanted to ask you, is there, or can y'all make a way? I know we, I was on the board before and we talked about doing quarterly payments, just annual payments, either or.
Right. We talked about that the last meeting. So one of the things we hope is with the website, we have the option for at least semi-annually. We may not do quarterly, but at least semi-annually and annually where maybe it's easier for you to pay one twenty-five and one twenty-five than two fifty at once. So we definitely hope to have that functionality soon. But again, it takes money to have somebody design a website. But we, we definitely want to offer that. We probably won't do quarterly, but we'll at least do semi-annually and annually. And, uh, somebody asked to repeat the question. It's clear, it was more of a statement basically saying that the HOA fees have been low. He was on the board for a while since he's been here and that his opinion was that the HOA fee should be even more than the two fifty we're proposing to increase the fees to. And, and I agree categorically. I think our fees, I agree with Ms. Deidra. Our fees are bargained. Two fifty's low. I think if we went up to a solid five hundred, we could have security. We can just get a lot done. But. Yeah. But, but yeah, yeah, I'd be, I'd be, I ain't gonna say that, but I'd be treated like old. Yeah, but, uh, you, you can go ahead, man.
I'm Miss Render. I was on the board when it started. My husband and I. I was the secretary and he was the president. And then, yeah, Melvin invested architecture and control. And we initially raised the fee because we could see what the future looked like.
Right. Right.
And I do agree with what you're saying as far as going up two fifty, that's not way too much. And I don't really have a problem with that. But I would ask that as far as late fees go, would you kind of give a little leni on putting late fees on people if they're not able to pay that two fifty as a piano to you because that's gonna rattle some business?
Absolutely.
Holidays.
Yeah, I think they need to, you have to communicate with us too.
Right. And I can tell you, Miss Render.
People are not communicating and they're just being lazy. Sorry. I need to communicate. So yes, the late fees will apply. But it's, I mean, it's just like with anything else, any other bill, you can call and you communicate with someone.
Well, that's what we always said, was to let us know what's going on. Get that partnership, talk to us because we don't know.
And, and we put that in email. Somebody made a statement, said it was an Aliyah four page later. It was long as hell. But we put that in that if you're experiencing hardship, that's nothing new with us, Melvin. We will absolutely work with you. You're absolutely right. The fees are due right after the holiday season. A lot of people trying to recover, hoping for a tax refund. So we will work with anyone. One thing that he mentioned that could help is the option to be able to pay, you know, a portion as opposed to having to pay the whole thing. But absolutely, we will work with anyone experiencing hardship when it comes to the HOA fees. And you brought up a good point that we, we sat down and forecasted and looked at the future, future. It don't take a rocket scientist to see we're broke and we gotta have more money. We just gotta. One thing I talked about last time was inflation has infected our personal lives. Groceries probably another thirty, forty percent than they, that affects us. Pool chemicals are more. Everything costs the HOA more, just like it does us and our personal lives. So inflation probably called for the dues to have to adjust some just because the cost of goods, the cost of services are way higher than they used to be.
We've been on a shoestring budget. This render to fix it, sorry, Deidre.
Agreed. I, I, I agree. And what's your last name, sir? I can't remember. Coleman, Mr. Coleman. Yeah, Mr. Coleman. I agree a hundred percent. We ain't had enough money. And that's the point we tried to make. I got the previous board's long-term vision, hoping to not increase the fees, but I'm more of a realist, like we ain't got enough money. And we've been on a tight budget for way too long. We can't sit there and operate without, you know, I've had worries. I'll just be transparent. Somebody's booked the pool party and I know our pool equipment is on, what, the fourth, fifth year sitting in this ninety-degree Georgia summer. And I know sooner or later that pumps going out, the chlorinators, something's gonna give. And if it, if it would have gave this year, pool would have been closed. If it had gave when we had three hundred dollars, it had been closed. One question we got last meeting, I want to make sure I go over, is one thing we constantly get from a lot of people is that my family doesn't use the pool. I shouldn't have to pay for it. My family never used the pool before. Now, we've used it a couple times this year. I've been here for over five years. We never used the pool. I voted for the pool knowing we weren't gonna use it because A, I thought it would help increase my property value and B, I thought it would just be something good for the neighborhood. I think all of us, one way or another, have benefited from it, increasing our property values. We have people renting out their homes, charging their tenants another hundred bucks. Just, that don't, that's not coming, that's not coming to us just because their tenants want access to the pool. I think the pool has indirectly benefited all of us, whether we use it or not. The other part of that is the HOA covenant explicitly states that any amenity that is available to every member of Lexington Hills, the cost of it must be shared amongst all households. So doesn't mean you have to use it. If it is available for you to use as a homeowner, the cost of the pool must be shared amongst everyone. And so that's a, that there's no, I don't use the pool, so I shouldn't share in the cost. That's not a thing. Another question we got in the last meeting is that, so all this is because the pool? And the answer is yes. It is. All of it is. Most of our expenses come with this piece of property right here and, and it's not going away. If we were to leave that pool vacant right now and just let the water go green like it did last winter and, and all of that stuff during the summer, we still would have that same mortgage payment due and we'd have some upset neighbors because it's undesirables and I say. There's no erasing this mortgage once we decided to get it. So there is no, the best thing we can do, we're, we're probably about forty percent through this ten-year mortgage. Best thing we can do is keep chugging along, knowing that the endpoint of that mortgage is coming. But there, there's no, you know, my family doesn't use the pool, so can I not share in the cost? The cost has to be shared amongst our homeowners. I'll tell you, we've done everything, everything has been done as cheap as possible. Ms. Arnold commented in the chat, her father worked in the pool business for over twenty years. I happen, I don't remember why I had to speak with Ms. Arnold, but her father offered his services and I took him up. He has helped us tremendously. He will not take money if we offer it to him because he knows we're broke. Now, we should be able to compensate him something fair for his time and expertise and coming down here and vacuuming this pool and testing the water. We should be able to compensate him something, something for it, but he did that on an entirely volunteer basis. One, I actually started helping Melvin with the pool last year. One problem I noticed was when you tried to vacuum the pool, you didn't get enough suction. Once I took over, got a look at the plumbing and I realized when they plumbed the pool, they tied the skimmer and the bottom drains together. That's gotta have a valve to shut the bottom drains off so you can force enough suction to the skimmer to vacuum. Well, my neighbor that stays across the street, Brandon Sweetman, because the pool store wanted a thousand dollars, we went and bought this valve. Probably four trips to plumbing stores and two hundred and fifty bucks later, we cut that thing out, put the new one on and that, we've been able to vacuum the pool. The pool has so much suction to that one skimmer, you stick your finger in it, it'll get stuck. That, that's just an example of the valve, not. That, that, that's just an example of the valve, not just from us, but just from different residents in Lexington Hills. What people have had to do to try to keep us afloat with this shoestring budget. Grass is kind of high now, because we try to go as long as we can to get a cut. We do pay a neighbor to cut the grass, but he's done it for free plenty of times, because the grass needs to be cut and we're broke. And so any service that's offered, you know, like Mr. Anderson else with the pool, maybe we don't pay him as much as Aquarius Pools wants. But we should be able to give him something for his time and expertise. I can tell you, without him, without a lot of other residents, we would not be in the situation we're in. Y'all, I'm sure you see me, see the short dude at the pool. You'll see me in the mornings or sometimes at nighttime, I'm out testing the water, vacuuming. And I see people pass. Sometimes people stop and talk to me. All of that is done on a, I have not received one cent for doing this stuff. And neither has any volunteer or any board member of Lexington Hills. The only way we can get this, I, I love the term you use, the only way we're getting stuff done is because we're operating on this shoestring budget. And that just cannot continue. Um, we, um, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I might have missed it. Um, if we get, we go up to the proposed amount.
Mm-hmm.
What is the budget and the forecast we get at that proposed amount?
So the budget, uh, we'll take in a little over fifty thousand. I'm just rough, roughing it. We'll take in a little over fifty thousand. Now, remember, one thing that we did wrong in our budgeting before, when we budgeted, we budgeted as if we receive a hundred percent of dues in a year. That is not the case. We will, we, we are at about ninety-three percent collections. Usually something like this, I'll take a three-year average. We'll probably do our budget based off that ninety-three percent of homes paying the two fifty in a timely manner. Our budget also didn't include money for collection, because as I stated, if we have to file suit on someone, we spend money right now to recoup money down the road. But roughly, and this is rough now, I'm, 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 we'll be at thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand in expenses, depending on what we do with security. There are some things like the pool furniture, you can see it, it's just falling apart. That's a salt pool. Everybody knows salt is corrosive to metal. That furniture needs to be replaced. But I think we'll roughly probably have seven, eight K that's not accounted for, um, in twenty twenty-three. Now, there are some things we need done. We need new furniture. We need some better landscaping. Um, one thing that I'm gonna, and I ask everybody to contact our councilman, is the roundabouts are not Lexington Hills property. Neither is that area between the roundabouts. That is the city of Columbus. Um, it's been on my to-do list, but I'm gonna ask them, why don't our roundabouts look like, why don't it look like the one by the Family Dollar? Why don't it look like the one by River Road? Why doesn't it look like the one on Orange Springs Road and Blackman Road? So, but the roundabouts are not Lexington Hills property. Neither is that area between the roundabouts. That is the city of Columbus. So any one of us at any time, don't hesitate to pick up three-one-one and request. And, and, and I can't remember the name of our councilman, but I'm definitely gonna ask him what needs to happen for our roundabouts. Huh, I think it is. What needs to happen for our roundabouts to look like the other roundabouts in town? But those areas are not Lexington Hills. I know a lot of people complain about the roundabouts. And we've, we've talked about putting some money into them to look better, but I'm gonna lean on the councilman and say, if we do it, we need to be reimbursed or come out here and make it look like the average roundabout in Columbus.
We've done that twice.
And, and.
Twelve hundred dollars on those roundabouts.
Right.
And they end up looking the way they look. And talk to Melvin.
Mm-hmm.
This roundabout here, I think he told the city that HO, that the HOA would adopt that roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why the city has to put anything into this roundabout.
Okay.
We did adopt this one.
Because down by the apartments, we did do that one.
Okay.
I believe the HOA did adopt this one.
Okay, okay. So that.
For adoption, just for one year though.
For it was for one year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm not sure the city knew that.
Right.
It went back on them. That was what, twenty seventeen, it should have went back on the, the city.
Yeah. And so from talking to Melvin, it's been back. I didn't know that piece of information. Appreciate you, Mr. Coleman. But it's, it's been back on the city. But again, I, I, few thousand dollars having landscape look beautiful, I think makes our neighborhood look better. But that's something we can consider with this increase with the budget we had. It wasn't even a thing. So now, you know, they were landscape weed fabric, they need weed killer, they need some nice perennial landscape, and they need something to make them look nice. They are absolute eyesores.
We did that, and they took their four-wheelers and ran over them at night.
Right, right.
Me and Daniel, we did that whole roundabout with the red and black motion.
Mm-hmm.
And they ran their four-wheelers through there at night.
Right. So we, we know we're gonna have issues, but something like that, it's gonna take money to put it back. And so I, I think the foundation of this proposed, uh, increase is that we, we don't have enough money. We don't have a reserve. And, uh, we've got to get back to where we have those things, so we can operate effectively. You can go ahead, sir.
Yeah, we got eighty-five dollars. Let me bring in roughly, what, eighteen dollars?
I think so. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So with those who paid the eighty-five dollars on September one, when you sent out the things, are they still having to pay the two fifty in January?
So that's a great question. So I know there's some confusion. The special assessment is completely separate from the increase. So every home is responsible for the eighty-five dollar special assessment by the end of this month. The, this increase is not final. If it does go through, then every home's new HOA dues will become two fifty per year, an increase of one sixty-five. So the special assessment is final. That's not up for debate anymore. But this increase is definitely still up in the year. It is not final. That's why, that's why we're here today.
So you have to the end of this month to pay the eighty-five?
Yes, ma'am. And again, if you're facing financial hardship, you can email us, reach out to one of us through Messenger. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely work with you. Um, I got some pushback, because we had a member that says you need to state what the late fees are on every invoice, because some people have this vision that we can late fee our way to having enough money. Ain't all the late fees in the world to bridge, no, bridges gap. So we can't lay, and if you look at the covenant, the covenant says late fee per year is ten percent or whatever the board sees fit. So ten percent ain't a lot of money. So I don't put that on there, because we like to work with people. Again, it was an unexpected expense. We will work with anyone that works with us. Um, but we can't late fee our way to bridging this gap. All the late fee, we, if we were at a hundred percent collections today, we still would be sitting there having this meeting. So we can't, we can't collect our, uh, way to, in this gap. And again, I want to state, us being at about ninety-three percent and change is, is ass, is, is awesome. That is a great place to be at. That is a realistic place to be at. We're never gonna be at a hundred percent. You can go ahead, Mr. Burks.
If we, just a question on this.
Mm-hmm.
If we, and I said, I know if we don't vote on this two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And it do hit the one eighty mark.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Will, I mean, will we have to try have another assessment right in the middle?
Oh, that, so that, I, I, I'll say the same comment I made. Um, if this increase is voted down, because I, I, I have to look at the covenant. I think it's gonna require, I'm not sure if it's just a simple majority or a sixty-six percent. If it is voted down, we can increase ten percent. That's gonna take the dues up to one eighty, one fifty. And I'm not gonna waste any time. The minute we sit down and do the twenty twenty-three budget and we're sure, we're gonna figure out what that amount is, and we are gonna do another special assessment. We all know because the special assessment amount is gonna be less than the yearly dues, it's not even gonna take a vote to go through. So if the increase doesn't go through, unless some miraculous happens, we're gonna be short next year again. And we're gonna do a special assessment and we'll do this song and dance again. We'll try to get an increase. If it don't go through, we'll go up another ten percent. And that's gonna be the yearly song and dance until we get the HOA dues to a place that's healthy and where they need to be. So again, I don't try to tell people, uh, what you want to hear. I said this last meeting, if you want someone that's gonna get up here and tell you fairy tales and unicorns, you need to vote for someone else. But if you want someone that's gonna get up here and try to be transparent and realistic, then, you know, you, you, you obviously vote for me. But that's where we're gonna be at. We're not gonna have enough money. One eighty ain't gonna have, make us have enough money. And we're gonna be doing a special, and I'm not gonna wait till July, August, September to do it. We're gonna do it early in the year to make sure we have enough money. So.
So when, um, they finish building out here, is the HOA just not going to be dissolved at that point, right?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. I think the HOA exists indefinitely until it is dissolved by vote.
It, um, it lasts thirty years.
Okay, thirty years. Yeah, and I think it was established in two thousand eight, Miss Render, is it my year right?
My name is here, ten.
Seven.
Two thousand seven. So if it exists for thirty years, we got to twenty thirty-seven.
What happens when they're done building, right now, the builder owns the majority of the HOA.
Exactly.
When it comes to the board.
Yeah.
The board is the majority of the HOA.
Right.
So right now, in order for the board to get something done, if they don't meet a quorum, they have to get buy-in from the builder.
Right.
After that, they will not need to get buy-in from the builder.
Right. So in, in short, the HOA ain't going anywhere, any, I don't even know how many of us will be living here in fifteen years. So the HOA isn't going anywhere anytime soon. My opinion, I know it's not shared, is it'd be an awful thing for the HOA to go away. Um, I think it brings.
We did not have an HOA.
Agreed.
Well, Bunker Hills, this is, this is nice of the neighborhood. They don't have an HOA. Their homes, they're a lot of.
Well, there's lots of nice homes in Bunker Hills, and then you get one that looks absolutely awful. And there's nothing that can be done about it. Um, one thing we need to do a little bit better of a job on is architectural control. But one reason, we just ran out of money to even send out letters. But, um, the, the HOA, nobody wants to stay next to the homeowner whose house and home looks awful, whose home full of green fungus, yard is full of dirt. If you stay by that house, I guarantee you, if you were to sell, you would miss out on offers, because people don't want to buy the home that's next to the home that looks like that. So it has absolutely nothing to do with how you maintain your home. It has to do with how your neighbor maintains theirs. HOA can definitely help enforce standards, and, and if those standards aren't met, fine homeowners. Um, I don't know how often fines were, uh, enforcing the pad, but we are gonna enforce them. And I can tell you, one thing we're gonna do with this website is set precedent. So if you have a hundred dollars in fines, you're not gonna be able to pay your HOA dues. The only thing you're gonna be able to pay is that fine first, and then you can pay your HOA dues. So we're gonna make sure that if you have a fine, it, it is, it is firm, it is there. That fine isn't just something to be done. It is there to try to make sure that you keep your home up to a certain standard. Uh, you can go ahead, ma'am.
I was trying to say that my step and some of my neighbors, we had like this big huge yellow truck, um, on the.
Yeah.
On the T, and it's been out, uh, purposefully for a while.
Mm-hmm.
We even went next door, you know, this day and trying to keep, keep moving to people's house. I mean, that's just, that's just, that's just not safe. So there has been a car that's been pulled out.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Pulled out, pulled out. And then some neighbors moved in recently, and they were just complaining about, they've been there like six, six months. But I have seen other cars being parked on the side of the road, something had, I don't know if you guys had something to do with it or not, but they were never. It never moved. It's like, I'm not driving. It's like a commercial truck. And sometimes it'll move it like maybe, hmm, maybe two months and move it and bring it back. Something like that shit, it move it. Then it is not safe. It's a safety issue.
Agreed.
And that's a two-way street, you know.
Agreed.
It is always, in that area is always runway.
Agreed.
It's dangerous. It is so dangerous. I mean, I can read, I can, I have to walk, you know, uh, areas to try to get out of my driveway.
Agreed. I don't know why, what you're talking about. On Antietam, I know exactly what you're talking about. And our, our hands have been tied with that. We have heard several complaints. I'm gonna tell you what we're experiencing. HOA, the street is public property. As far as the HOA is concerned, they have to meet the same standard any other vehicle, which is if it moves every so often and they're not blocking easement to utilities, mailboxes, or driveways, our hands are, even from a city of Columbus perspective. They, they move that truck. I, I, matter of fact, I can't think of the gentleman's name, but it's a, I, I got a gentleman on Antietam that says for sure. He's complaining. He said, but they do move their truck. They really got us in a catch twenty-two with that truck. I'm just gonna be honest, because they're not breaking a rule in the HOA and they're not violating Columbus City ordinance. But obviously, it's not good. That truck, you can, you see it as soon as you turn to neighbor, that big old yellow Penske truck. So we, uh, we're still working on that. I can tell you, it, it's not, we, we are aware, but our hands are, and I like to be real, realistic. Our hands are somewhat tied. And I heard about the young driver coming up, was blinded and boom, ran smack into the, the Penske truck. Yep. So I heard about that. But our hands so far have kind of been tied, trying to come up with a way we can enforce something with that, with that vehicle. Because they aren't breaking any kind of law. And the only thing the HOA has that I can even think is the HOA has something where if something or somebody is declared a nuisance, we can take oxygen. But that's a real gray area, saying your legally parked vehicle is a nuisance to the homeowners association.
You can't even, you're not by your own residence, but I was gonna say, let, because I've been there a while.
Mm-hmm.
And trying to come out of her driveway. She has more than one vehicle in her driveway already. So you park in her driveway, you trying to get out, you have.
Yeah, the truck makes it tough.
To try to.
Agreed. Again, I'm not arguing against everything y'all saying.
Could that be used towards the fact that, you know, it's blocking somebody's driveway?
I think we're gonna be, honestly, I think if that went to court, we lose, and we lose money pursuing it, because I really do think that is, because we, people have called the city of Columbus. And they said, are you moving it? Yeah. Made them move it right then? As long, and I, and don't quote me on this, I think it has to move every fourteen days maybe?
No, it does not. It does not.
You go ahead, Mr. Coleman.
That's how you set up, but it does not. It's rarely will catch your attention, because I, I work from home and I know it's never moved. Five years since April about on that thing.
Right.
It's not even.
We fought this issue in the past with stale vehicles on the parking street. Well, the city of Columbus comes out here and said, as long as it's a registered vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And their registration's turned, there's nothing they can do to make them move it, because as long as the vehicle's registered, it can be parked on public roadway.
Right. And so.
Even if it's a safety hazard, if it's whatever, it doesn't matter, it's registered. So legally, it'll be there.
It's really getting on my nerves so bad. I'm, I'm really conflicted on this, moving away from my own setup. It's just because I don't want to lock my door.
Right.
I was like, he's about to lock my door, he's like this big yellow, huge bus.
Right, right. I understand.
It's just ridiculous.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm thinking about trying to find somewhere else to stay myself, because it's ridiculous.
I, I agree. Um, I can't say too much.
To the park around the corner, maybe, on the side of the street and not the main.
I can't say too much. What I'll say is we've been in contact with the homeowner and, and that's a tenant in that house. And I can tell you, we've, I have personally had the cops called on me this year, trying to enforce HOA rules on a renter. Sometimes renters are the biggest headache, because you got a property management company who they're worried about their bottom line. They have to really violate something for the property management company to want to take action and terminate a renter's lease. We, I've went through this dance this year since I've been president. Um, homeowner's a little bit easier. Tenants, not so easy. But we're, 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 we're working on it. I don't know what the resolution is gonna be. But I can tell you, the difficulty is by the definitions of Columbus, they're legally parked. That's a legal vehicle on that street. And that's what, that's what, even though I agree with you, you, you gotta park and you got twelve feet that you can't see when you're backing out of your driveway. So I agree with you one hundred percent. But city of Columbus kind of shrugged their shoulders at that. So, but we're working on it.
Yeah, poor flat guy would have to.
Yeah, he had to move it. It, it, it had to move. And I just want to remind everybody, almost, almost every home got cameras in this, in this thing. So most of us got cameras that can, and some of us got, you know, four K cameras. So most everybody has cameras. But, uh, but so, but. I've talked to her as well.
Yeah, he did.
I've talked, and I can tell you the, 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 anyway, it's kind of what I said, when you're dealing with renters and property management, it's not so easy. They, they will enforce a clear-cut violation easy. Something that's in a gray area, not so easy. So then, and I'm struggling to see the, uh, questions that's coming in on the live, because this computer died. If one of y'all can let me know if we have any questions, um, that would be great. I open it up to just any questions. Again, we, we aim to be transparent. Sometimes our emails are long. It's to try to give people as much detail and transparency as possible. I think Melvin did awesome job and previous board members. Uh, but I think the one thing, uh, people have asked for is more transparency. And that's something we struggle to provide. I will tell you, though, it irked the crap out of me that we had several residents who they didn't miss email after email, Facebook message after Facebook message. And these aren't elderly, um, homeowners who maybe don't use electronic communication. They missed everything. But boy, they ain't missed that eighty-five dollar special assessment bill. They ain't missed that. You ain't missed that, but you missed everything else.
Well, you know, we just moved here.
Mm-hmm.
And we, I never knew nothing about this.
Oh, well, that, that's different.
Nothing about this.
Right.
And so when the eighty-five dollars came up, that's when I found out about.
Absolutely.
And when we put, um, cement in the front, I found out about.
Right, right. Yeah, because you, you, I think you stay on Magazine Lane, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, so, um, and, and somebody complained on the page. If you weren't well aware of the HOA, then when you ever do another home purchase, you might need to find a new person, because.
My realtor never, I've never mentioned none of this. And then when we pulled up the lease and seen it, then I.
Yeah, because you say.
I, they just never mentioned none of this.
I, I will tell you, my realtor did a fantastic job. We knew about the HOA, everything, but it, that's luck of the draw. Uh, again, it's not hard to get a license. Uh, again, it's not hard to get a license to sell homes. And when the environment was what it was, when every home and multiple offers, anybody with a pulse could sell a home. So you gotta really be aware of.
She was a good realtor, but she, this, our house was the first one she sold.
Right, right. And she's learning lessons, I'm sure, but you, ho, you should know of the HOA existence as you're buying your home, if, if you didn't, you know, glad you know now, but they should have made sure you knew that.
They should.
Yeah, because lots of people won't, you know, some people won't buy into neighborhoods with homeowners. They want more freedom, they want to be able to put pink shoulders on their homes, like.
Well, now that I know more about it, it's, it's good to have, I see that now, but I never knew nothing about this.
Right, alright, but, and, 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 but that's not what I'm talking about, there's people been here for years and, and some of us just want to not pay attention until some, like Mr. Coleman said, until some dollars, dollars get our attention, right? My kids could be talking to me to death when I pick them up from school and I'm ignoring them until they say, oh, but I need, you, you need twenty dollars for what? Cause I ain't hear nothing before that, I ain't hear nothing before that, but I heard when they said they need, I need twenty dollars for this, or I need, I need money for some, some. I heard that and then I gotta back up, so, uh, lots of times money gets people's attention and a lot of people's attention was grabbed when they got that bill for the special assessment. Uh, I'm gonna go to Mr. Coleman first and then you.
I just, I just wanted to make a comment, I, I think it would be helpful if the board sent out the updated covenant. Um, I was the one that sent you the email about the BCC and people before you.
Yeah, 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 and I started doing that, yeah, that's a good.
So, I, I think it's important if you send out the covenant, that way everybody can say, well, I don't know what the covenant says, take them in and read the covenant.
Alright, and.
I think my question was with that.
Yeah, and the covenant, we'll send it out, but it, it is available always on the Facebook page under files. The covenant, right, right, and I know a lot of people don't have social media, but it's avai, that and the bylaws are available there, but we, we can, can you take that note a minute? We can, we can, uh, email the covenant. It's a bunch of legal lease, but if you want to be more educated about the homeowners association, best way is to take a look at the covenant.
I was reading the covenant, what is it?
Well, no, no, I'm just saying.
That's the same one, it ain't, it ain't been touched since then.
Sometimes there's small changes the board might make and whatever the most current lady, that's all.
And that's something we want to tackle next year is. I don't think it's been updated since it's.
We made some small changes.
Yeah, like maybe twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen?
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
So depending on how long you've been here, it's probably already was a. Right. Right, and, uh, we actually want to alternate, alter the covenant is not gonna be easy. We want to make some quality of life improvements, um, to what the covenant states. Like one thing I can tell you is that we've kind of said that if you have a trailer or a boat, as long as it's kind of recessed a bit, or it's on your, you expand your driveway, then that, that's okay. That has been the precedent before I ever became president. But if you read the covenant, it, it says it gotta be in your backyard and not, I don't know how a Winnebago is not gonna be visible from the street. You can't even build a fence that high. So there, there are some quality of life improvements we need to make to be real with the standards that we want to have and, and loosen up some freedom. Like, um, there, there are some things in the covenant, I think it says you can have one roofed thing in your backyard. Like if you have a shed, you can't have a man cave or a she shed and vice versa. Oh, I, we don't really care too much what you do in your backyard. If you have a fence, it's the front of your home that needs to stay. I don't, I don't want to have to get approval for somebody to pour some extra concrete and make their patio bigger. We don't care because we can't see that from the street anyway. So there are some quality of life improvements we want to make to bring, the covenant at this point is a fourteen, well, it, it ain't been updated in seven, eight years. So it is some things we want to do to bring that kind of into twenty twenty-two and bring it current with some of the standards that kind of are in place, uh, right now. And I, that's the biggest one I can think of.
If y'all address to, um, I know we added in there in twenty sixteen about basketball goals.
Yeah, yeah, and.
I don't know exactly what it says, but it says something about basketball, because during that time, there were basketball goals everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it's, it's in there, but it's, it's, it's great, but that's something with architectural control we're focusing on. You have a goal, you, you gotta pull it where it's not visible when it's not in use. Those things are generally an eyesore, it's a few people who got them cemented into their front yards that looks fine, you can't attach it to. I don't think anybody has it attached to the home like they used to do back in the day. But there, there are some improvements we want to make with the, uh, with the covenant, but that's gonna be a project for, uh, next year. And that will require a vote from everybody. I know for a fact that's gonna take a two-thirds vote. So I'm sure there's gonna be some things people like and some things people don't, but that's something we'll try to tackle next year.
Okay, my question was that, um, in the covenant area, is that where I would find, like, what areas of the association needs covered?
Yeah, i- 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 yeah, cause it basically states, uh, any, any common area and upkeep of common areas, and I'm just summarizing. But you can read it explicitly and it'll tell you what your HOA dues are covering. So I can tell you, anything that's property of Lexington Hills or is, uh, in any shared area is what your money is, is going towards. So, uh, that's generally what your fees go towards, but you can definitely read that in the covenant.
Okay, um, and I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
What is it about sidewalks? I'm from up north.
Uh, uh, hey, me too.
I have my house built here.
Me too. Yeah.
And, and, and I, I just, it gotta be somewhere for the children.
I agree, uh, I grew up in Minnesota a lot of my childhood, in the nineties, and every street has sidewalks on both sides. I never un, until I moved, we moved to the side by highway through my childhood and none of the streets had sidewalks, and I was just so weird.
I was told when I asked about sidewalks, that you as a homeowner can put the concrete in front of your house and you will be responsible for paying for it or whatever. But if the streets are considered the city's property, why can't the city put?
So I can, I can give you some, share some light on that. So first few feet of our properties aren't really ours, they're the city's. It's called, uh, yeah, ten feet, and, um. Right, and I can tell you, if you paid attention this year, Greyhawk added some sidewalks by the roundabout. The city has came down on Greyhawk some because they're, they're telling Greyhawk that after a certain date, certain streets have to have a sidewalk on one side. So I think Greyhawk is being cheap. Like I know, for example, I know for sure Magazine Lane, Legion and Peripet are gonna have a sidewalk paired. I think it's gonna happen to be on my side, on Magazine, because I see them steady spraying for the march. But I think streets after, and I'm not sure what the date is, have to have a sidewalk on one side. They may be okay with, like Antietam who has been here forever not having sidewalks, I'm not sure. Honestly, most companies are cheap, if that is the case, which I think it is, it's gonna be, does the HOA want to tackle adding sidewalks to the streets that Greyhawk doesn't have to? But I can tell you, for whatever reason, the sta, the, the standards for stuff like that seem to be a little bit behind in the south. Up north, every street, uh, at least where I was, every street had a sidewalk, I never saw that.
They told me they gonna do that, but I'm tired of them coming through there digging up holes.
Yeah.
Did you say something about them not, Greyhawk not being responsible?
So, a- and again, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, I want to make sure I state that, but the, I think the case is, at a certain date, Columbus passed something that says streets paved after need to have sidewalks.
Oh, after, okay.
In twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
The city passed the ordinance saying anything after this day need sidewalks. Prior to twenty seventeen, you can build the neighborhood without streets. So what Greyhawk did to get away with that, that's why you have these unfinished streets. So if I start the street before twenty seventeen, I don't have to put sidewalks on it. And we fought that battle and that's what this is.
Right, so from, from what I've heard, they're adding a sidewalk to Magazine, Legion, and I think Peripet. The other streets, it's nothing, I can just tell you, they're not gonna add one at their expense, so that's something down the road.
Those houses, we are responsible for.
I don't even know if legally you could add a sidewalk, cause that first ten feet is not your property. I, I don't even know if that's a thing, I would bet that would be a large project, we need to get approval from the city on and then do it all at once. But you know, I, I have to research that further, but I don't think you can just add a sidewalk to your own property.
The answer is when we ask about, if the, if they come through like eighteen feet, can you put fiber? Well, if they tear up your concrete, they only have to put it back to what the original plans were.
Right.
Which is naked, which is grass.
Which wouldn't include your concrete, right. You can go ahead, sir.
Uh-huh. First, trying to, I would like, maybe for these drinks, our water pressure.
Yeah, we, we've, so, it's only so much we can do. I, I know we had people on Legion that, that, they came out and did some things, cause, uh, water, uh, water pressure. Um, I'm open to any ideas on that, because I, I, I just honestly don't think as long, you know, most things got some kind of minimum standard in these days. And as long as somebody comes out and it passes this minimum standard, it's not gonna be a whole lot of actionable things we can do.
I, I did a council, I did a council, and, and lots, and that's not the standard. They, I've been calling for them to go back to the house.
Right.
You got forty psi water pressure, you're not enough.
Right, right.
Every home should have sixty-five, seventy-five.
So.
For, for, um.
Water pressure.
Now, a hundred psi is too high.
Right, right.
And we need to get some kind of petition for them to open up another pump section.
Yeah.
Add houses to the same range, it just only decrease the pressure.
Right, and so that's a good point, you know, we know it's thirty, forty, fifty more houses gonna be built that's gonna dilute the, uh, the, the pressure. So that's something, we'll, we'll look into that, um, make sure that, that pressure is continually being met as new homes are, are built. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Question, uh, I hear you say a forty up there on that zoom. That, uh, if you got a fence right, can you, and you want to. Can you go on one of these?
Okay, okay, all right, you go ahead, Mr. Burke.
If you got a fence right, now I want to put, I want to put, uh, sun, sunroom on the back of my house, do I need approval for that?
Yeah, if, if it's gonna have some kind of roofing, you would need to get approval. Will you just submit plans to us, we don't take long, uh, unless we just happen to miss the email, but we won't take long approving it. Generally, if the roof is gonna be the same as your home, yeah, they get a quick approval. Um, couple of questions we got in the chat, uh, so I can tell you that we haven't met, we got nineteen, we had, we maxed out at twenty-one people in the chat. Uh, we gotta have a hundred and thirty people to meet a quorum to, to vote. So I'm on, I'm on research what Mr. Coleman says, but if that's right, we'll vote whether it's by writing or whatever at the next meet. Um, at, at that point, we'll see, um, my gut, and I'm gonna tell you my gut, everybody votes. Okay, I thought that was my phone, I got that same alarm on my phone, and I'm standing looking for my phone, it's right here, but, uh.
You can always bring the builder in to meet Quorum.
Yeah, uh, we'll see, my, my, my ask to everybody in Lexington Hills is to be open-minded. And, uh, cause you're gonna pay the increase one way or another, and I've said this, so I'm trying to be honest. If you don't pay it now, you're gonna still pay it next year, because we're gonna do another special assessment to bridge that gap. To me is it, 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 we, we need all these things done, right? We want us, the, the board to take time to pursue these vehicles, architectural control, like the gentleman, Mr. Powell said, check on water. All this stuff costs time and some of it costs money, we gotta have the necessary money to operate. Some of these things could be out of our, our realm, if you will, we may need to bring in some legal help. So lawyers can get things done a whole lot quicker, like if we truly aren't meeting water pressure in some of these homes, Mr. Powell, we need to me, need to bring in an attorney, and we may get our money back if we win, but we gotta have funds to pursue things like that. I am not an attorney, Amanda isn't, Natasha isn't. All that stuff takes money for us to make the neighborhood is, is, is good as it needs to be and for us to hold Greyhawk accountable, they're still building. Worst-case scenarios, they finishing, it's things that ain't as they should be. That stuff costs money, money that we need to be able to have. If we need to pay an attorney a couple grand for a retainer to pursue an issue, and sometimes their nasty grams will get the job done, we gotta have the money to do that. And so that's why my ask is when we do vote next month, eh, you vote and approve the increase. I, I think anybody that is logical can see the need for the increase. Eh, it's up to every homeowner, um, as far as what they want to do. If, uh, but again, I'll just be transparent, if it's, it's, if it's not voted for, the dues will go up by ten percent. That'll be invoiced in January and, uh, we'll take a look and once it's clear that we don't have enough money, we'll forecast, we'll do another special assessment and we'll just do this same old song and dance and another ten percent increase. Again, I kind of hate being the bad guy, like I said earlier, um, or, or, or the board, I feel like the dues should have went up before now. And the reason the increase is, is, I don't think the dollar amount is the incre, of the increase, I don't think eighty-five dollars is a lot. I think what people are, are upset about is it is, from a percent standpoint, it's more than a fifty percent increase, and I think that's what a lot of people are upset about. My part of that is these dudes should have been with us, but we have to pay, we don't get a free pass to pay these. I pay my special assessment, Amanda asked, if the dues go up, we have to pay them as well. So we, we have to get buy-in from ourselves, because we have to pay these increases just like every other homeowner of Lexington Hills. I'm not sure, Ms. Davis, I'm not sure what your question is about mailbox, I, I can tell you that there is something in the covenant about mailboxes. They gotta be pretty uniform, so, but I'm not sure of the particulars, I will take a look at the covenant, we'll email it out.
We can't put stones around, because you can't build a stone around.
If people want to replace them, they're at Tractor Supply, that's where you got them.
Right, and, and, but again, that's something, you know, if we want to allow a little bit more freedom with something like that, you know, if we, if we alter the covenant, we're gonna ask everybody for their, you know, their wish list and then we'll see. So that could be something, I think a little more freedom may be okay, but things need to be uniform. But that, that's something, as now, I think it's got to be pretty standard with what's already there.
A special assessment, how often do they need?
Uh, spe, so somebody asked in the chat, how often is a special assessment? The special assessment was a one-time thing. That doesn't mean the need for another special assessment will not arise. Um, I'm already telling you guys, if the increase ain't voted, we're gonna be short on money again next year and it's gonna be another special assessment. The difference about it now is you will have been forewarned, you won't know the exact amount, but you already know about it ahead of time. But the covenant says that the HOA can, you know, assess a special assessment when the need arises. It does state that if the assessment is more than the yearly dues, then it requires a vote. I'm sure it won't be more than the yearly dues, if we go down that road, so that's kind of where we're at. Yeah, we check, the mailbox under lock and key, we check the mailbox periodically, maybe about once, twice a week, but we do definitely check the mailbox. So it's, it's right down there in front of clubhouse, it's locked. Yes, ma'am, lots of people pay checks, money orders, cashier's checks in there. Lexington Hills Homeowners Association, or you just put Lexington Hills, Lexington Hills HOA. But, um, lots of people pay like that, a lot of people don't like all this electronic stuff, which is fine. And if you put your payment, I think Mr. Burke was the first one to pay his and drop his in there, but yeah, you put yours in there, we get it, so. Yeah, you can do electronically, what we generally do is invoice through PayPal, the, the website's gonna have it built in where you can click on. I love PayPal, because PayPal is more secure than a check. If some ain't right through PayPal, you file a complaint and PayPal's gonna yank the money back and check later. So we, somebody posted on the page saying they wanted a receipt, you ain't gonna get no better receipt than the one that PayPal gives you, so. But a lot of people just, remember, when you pay through PayPal, we don't see your information. You enter your card information on PayPal's website, all we get is your money minus the couple percent they take. So my personal opinion ain't too much more secure than paying via PayPal, but for some that don't want to pay that way, you can drop a check or money order in the box. You can go ahead, sir. We already got one, I posted on it, can you make a note of that? Believe it or not, lots of people have paid their dues with Cash App. All we ask is you put your name and address, e- especially if you are a woman, because one thing I've seen since I've taken over is our record sold Jacqueline Weaver. And, but that's not your last name, so if, make sure you put your address or we're gonna be calling, you're trying to figure out who it is, especially for anybody that has had a last name change. Yeah, just memo line, you say, you know, one, two, three Lexington Lake Drive, you know, John Doe, and, and you're good to go. And, and, and you obviously have history of that Cash App, since a lot of, we don't have Venmo yet, I know some people have asked, but we do have Cash App. Cash App is perfectly, Cash App's honestly a little bit easier than PayPal.
Yeah, and it's very secure too.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Ma'am. Yes, ma'am, yeah, 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 a- anytime I contact, especially the females and the last name is wrong, I ask them, okay, well, what's your last name now? So we can cor, correct that, yeah, somebody's like, I had to get my husband a boot, so.
One last question, uh, what if, this is a question, what if?
Hmm.
Alright, and you said that this money's gonna be paid off in ten years from now?
I think it was ten years from twenty eighteen, I gotta look, but I think we between four and five years into it right now.
Okay, so if we start now, like you can do an assessment, we figure out how much it's gonna take to pay it off, you know what I mean?
Hmm.
On that tenth year.
Hmm.
Could be gradually go up to that, or you'll be have to.
We could, but my gut is you're gonna get beat down for even suggesting that, because most, most people ain't gonna want to stomach a gradual increase to pay a mortgage off. And my, my response is ten years is quick anyway, from a mortgage standpoint, ten years is really, really fast. Like we're roughly halfway through, and that's, that's the picture I want to paint to everyone as well. Once we finish with that mortgage, we are in really good shape. We have some land behind Sand Hill that we can maybe do something with, there's, uh, lots of people have. Uh, lots of people have suggested, uh, I'm not sure if I'm saying this word right, a lanai, the, the screen covering that you see in Florida because. We're right by that pond. Every week I get frogs out of the pool and stuff. There's been snakes. Cuz it's a wildlife area, right? That will go away. So there are some things that we like to do. And ev- as we get closer to paying that mortgage off. Uh, we can realize a lot of that. But ten years ain't bad. Uh, I, two thousand dollars is already pretty steep for a mortgage payment. You can go ahead, Mr. Coleman. Oh, no, you're good.
Yeah, there's, uh, boy, you're saying two acres back. But the, um, I was gonna say what some people don't know either is the, the board needs the operating cost plus twenty percent. You supposed to have twenty percent in reserve. That's the magic number. And if, if you don't have that number, like, you know, um. I don't know what they would do in foreclosing on this, how it would help, but, um, yeah, so they, they need that extra twenty percent. And a lot of people just don't understand how the board works and runs. And, um. I just think that if people would read their covenant, it would really don't, shimmick, don't read it cuz it's boring, but. Uh, it, it would help you guys out a lot.
I agree.
Yeah, it's a thankless job. I don't want anyone, but.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, you know, I, I started, uh, Mel- Melvin used to post on the page that if you got a project, uh, let me know. So I said, well, Mel, I wanna. Tie my downstairs bath. So Melvin came over and helped me and he got on his knees and he helped me tie my half bathroom downstairs. That's how I kinda got to know Melvin more. And so I started helping Melvin with the pool because I had a little bit of pool experience. And then he, you know, that's when he told me he wasn't gonna run again. And I was like, you know, if we can't find anybody, you know what, I'll give it a go. That's kinda got, how I got into it. But I can tell, you know. Eighty-twenty rule. I'm sure most of us are familiar with the eighty-twenty rule. The average homeowner is fine. Appreciate what we do, but there's that small percentage. I have been caught everything under the sun since February. All because I'm trying to do the best that, yeah, we're trying to do the best we can. It is a thankless, non-paying job.
I just wanted to know, you mentioned the website. Are you talking about that next door?
No, no, it, it don't exist right now. We're trying to get one. We used to have one, but the board got rid of it just trying to save money. That's what Melvin did. E- everybody's been in situ- well, hopefully you haven't. But most of us have been in a situation where you're trying to cut, cut, cut cuz you ain't got enough money coming in. And that's what Melvin was doing, getting rid of the website, this and that. He was trying to cut as much as he could and it just got to the point, no more cutting. We used to have a website, he called it the portal, that was really functional. And we got rid of it trying to, there was a charge per month. To maintain any kinda website and got rid of it to try to save money. But we're hoping to get one relatively, relatively soon. But it does not exist right now. Yeah. Does not.
You said that, uh, the company is on, uh.
It's on the, if, if you get on Facebook.
Oh, on Facebook.
It's under files and we're gonna email it out. It's, uh, it's a tab that says files on Facebook. On, of the Lexington Hills page. And the covenant and bylaws are there, but we'll email them out as well. I, I say this every time I send. Yes, ma'am. It's under files. The covenant and HOA bylaws are listed there. Now, so, uh, yep, it's li- it's, but we'll email it out as well. And if, if we don't have your emails, send one of us a Facebook message. We'll make sure we get it added. I, we've done. No, through we, through email because lots of stuff, eh, we're kinda danged if we do, danged if we don't. Because for every person that wants us to use Facebook cuz it's quick, we get pushed back from somebody else. I don't know why y'all communicating through. Same thing with email. Same thing if we tried to mail everything. So we usually try to do more than one. Like usually if it's on Facebook, you should already have, unless it's something like, hey, pool's closed for a private party. But if it's an official. Communication, it's then came to your email.
Does the community use that next door thing?
I don't even know what you're talking about, ma'am.
That's not.
Wow.
Yeah, that's around the entire neighborhood too.
Oh, okay. Cause I mean, I did see some things about.
Yeah, the pothole at the roundabout.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I, I want to make, this is not related to the increase, but we know it's starting to get darker earlier. Time will flip back. Please. Make sure your floodlights are good. People, these criminals usually, now some of them are brazen, right? But most of them don't like to come to well-lit areas. We know as it gets darker. And it's not just our neighborhood. They hit three one nine oh nine, just like they do three one nine oh seven. They hit Garrett Pond, just like they hit here. They're gonna come. Pulling on car doors. Make sure your vehicles are secure. Lots of my remote starts, sometimes I have to go check and I left my freaking keys in the car. Cuz they fell out my pocket. Make sure your vehicles are secure. If you have weapons, please bring them in the house. We don't need to. Put any more weapons in these young people's hands. But a- as soon as it starts to get dark earlier, they start coming through. Pulling on these car doors. Like I, I saw someone posted that in the page, uh, last night. So it's gonna happen. Uh, you know, just secure your area. If your neighbor leaves their garage up, give, you know, let them know to close their garage. You know, I think the best thing we can do is kinda look out. For, uh, each other. But they're, they're gonna be coming, so make sure your vehicles are secure. If you're like me, my garage full of everything else and never have my vehicles in it. Some people park two vehicles, two SUVs. I'm like, how you get a SUV and a big old truck in their garage? But they do it. I, I, I don't ever park in my garage. So a- any other, uh, anything else come through?
The pothole at the roundabout.
Po- pothole at the roundabout, we've called. Potholes, call three one one. We've called. They, what, so what happens is, and I'm not sure the exact standard, but. So much has happened for them to come through and put the new tar on the whole street. They just keep coming in, filling it. Every time a car goes through, it's gonna do the same thing. Call three one one, get, get on these people's nerves. I've called three one one several times. Cuz I went over so hard. One day I had to park my vehicle and get out and check it, make sure it was straight. But call three one one. That's anywhere in Columbus, whether it's here or anywhere else, you can call three one one about, uh, pothole. The good thing is. If we call, if your vehicle is damaged after a call, but before it's fixed, the city will be responsible. I can tell you that because of that, they usually get out really, really fast to fill in those, uh, potholes. But that's just a call three one one. Potholes, lights out, Columbus property not cut, all of that can be done through three, or request through three one one. I, I haven't. I didn't even, I didn't even notice it. Make, make a note of that, Amanda. We'll call three one one. Yeah, some, some of that, um. I'm not sure. Some of it is Greyhawk. Like, uh, we need to, uh, have Greyhawk come through and trim there. Uh, they're what they own right now. But some of it is, is, I'm sure is the city. We'll, 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 we making notes, so we'll get on that. We've been think, we've been, we've been think, I, I think we will. Uh, you know, one, one thing that we want money for. If, if you came out, Mr. Hodge DJ'd the party that we had when we did the raffle, and it wa- it was fun. Eh, eh, a lot of people were here. Free food. Some people made fun cuz we had hot dogs. I would afford it at the time. But, but it, it was a good time. I think one thing a lot of people would like is. More fun stuff, movie nights on the line. Uh, y'all are self in the neighborhood. Parties that nobody should have to pay. All that stuff costs a lot of money. Or it costs some money. I think we, it'd be nice to do some kinda Halloween event a- a- at the clubhouse. So I, I think we, I think we will. It'd be nice. A, a lot of that stuff costs money. Again, some people's opinion is that, you know. No matter what, somebody will be like, well, y'all can't pay the bills cuz y'all wanna throw pool parties. Y'all wanna, like, I just scrub my shoulders. It just, eh, cuz we've already gotten that. According to some people, the reason we had the special assessment was cuz the pool party, even though the, we took in a little bit more on the raffle than we spent. On the party. So we, we are gonna try to do things to make Lexington Hills just a kinda better place to, to, something that's different. Cuz I don't think too many other neighborhoods, some are, but most of them aren't doing things like that. So I do, so you already know, Mr. Hodge, we're gonna be asking you to. To, uh, to, to help us out with some music. But I think we will do some for, uh, for Halloween.
I just wanted to put it out there and offer my services. If you need somebody to, uh, hold the lights up.
Oh, that's perfect. Cuz we definitely, we, I tried to take a stab at it and I feel like I'm real ticky, but I ain't taking enough for that. Cuz that, I was like, oh, no. Yeah. Okay.
And, um, I'll, I'll power wash this for you too. If you just, if you just let me know.
Okay, pre, pre, eh, eh, anything people are willing to volunteer, we'll take. Cuz what, and I made a post about it and I'm sure I missed a lot of people. There are so many people that have volunteered their time, or Mr. Hodge, for example, uh. Volunteer their time or services. They help keep costs down when they do things for free for the neighborhood. Um, the gentleman with the pool, that pool needs to be acid washed. Once it's cold enough, we're gonna drain that entire pool. He's gonna get in there with a hat, sma- a- and acid wash that entire. Now, we gonna give him something for that. Whatever it is, it's not gonna be what the pool place would charge. So it's so many people that make Lexington Hills go. From their volunteer contributions. And we'll take all of them that, uh, we can, we can get because we definitely need them to keep, you know, keep the fees as reasonable. As possible. You know, I've, I've, keep them as low as they can be. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I saw, I know, I know. And we got, we got a whole agreement with Mr. Hodge cuz it's some, yeah, but yeah. Without, without, without a lot of people like Mr. Hodge. Yep. We would be completely unsuccessful without people that are willing to give their time, money, share their property. Lexington Hills wouldn't even be what it is today without people willing to do those things. So, um, we appreciate everybody. Um, eh, even some people that ju- uh, observing, people call us, hey, kids jumping the fence. Somebody called me and reminded me that. I forgot to come down and put the trash out on Tuesday. I stopped working and ran down here and got the trash. It's just little things like that that really. Cuz one week I forgot it and that's why we have these little flies. It just, if my alarm went off, I was working. I said I was gonna go later and I forgot about it. So. Little things, it's, it's lots of people. We have a family that swim all the time and they. Hit us up every time there was an issue and, and it helped. And that's what made us come to the conclusion that we need this security. So. Sometimes it's, it's just as simple as, um, you know, keeping your eyes open. A matter of fact, we had the same leak happen a couple of weeks ago. The fitting on the hot water heater gave. And water was spewing everywhere. It was some kids that weren't of age swimming, didn't say nothing to nobody. So we booted them out. But, uh, a neighbor that stays on my street. Came down here to swim and sent me a message, said, hey, I don't know what's going on, but water's running from everywhere. We came down here, it was water everywhere. But because somebody said something soon enough, Amanda came down, we probably had, Mr. Gardner came down. We had shop vacs everywhere, fans. We were able to dry everything up, did not spend one cent of money fixing it. Or have to call insurance and automatically incur a twenty-five hundred dollar debt. That is simply because that homeowner. Saw something and said something. Simple as that. Now, I went and bought a water key and once the pool closed, I'm just gonna turn the water off at the street. During, uh, what, the off-season, you know what I'm saying? We can't have a leak if the water can't go past the street to avoid that. Because this building will go. Long periods in the winter without it being used. So if, if there's no party, we don't come down here very often. So. Just another example of somebody just telling us what they saw, say, probably saved the neighborhood thousands of dollars. Anything else on the Facebook? Uh, eh, eh, anybody else have any other questions or comments? Um, we'll, we'll, uh. We'll, we'll figure out the how-to and get an email out. But we're likely, you know what? I- if the covenant allows, we may go on and just send it out and let everybody vote now. Cuz I don't see no point in doing this again. Either people are gonna vote and approve or they're not. And then maybe by the next meeting, we can, uh. See what the next action is based on the outcome of the vote. So that'll likely be, uh, what we do. All right, well, um, we done went over a little bit, but that's fine. Uh, we do appreciate everybody coming. On whether you stay here or you stay in another state and you got a home here. You know, we all are vested in Lexington Hills. So we appreciate everyone. Uh, this video should be available on YouTube. We always take minutes. We don't always email them out, but we, um, we can, but they're always available if you want them. Or you can always, it's no better minutes than watching the meeting again. So, um, we'll go ahead and let everybody go. Y'all take care. Uh, on the virtual meeting. Have a good one.